Welcome to the October 1st, 2024 meeting of the Sandusky City Commission. We'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Waddington, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Okay. God our Father, as we gather for this meeting this evening, give us the guidance and wisdom to make the proper decisions. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Myers, do you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Vargo?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bajali?
Here.
Commissioners, you have before the minutes of our meeting of August 26, 2024. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Crable?
Motion to approve. That's submitted.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. And here, no objection. That motion is approved. Tonight, we have a presentation by our representative of the Sandusky, of the Greater Sandusky Partnership on the successful Party at the Pier event for 2024, and that would be Mackenzie Spriggs. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
There we go. Thank you, Cody. Hello, Sandusky City Commissioners. Hello to the staff, everyone here in the audience, and the folks at home. I'm Mackenzie Spriggs, Director of Destination Sandusky at the Greater Sandusky Partnership. We help with many of the marketing and placemaking aspects of downtown, and today I'm going to talk specifically about programming. We'd like to take just a few minutes to talk about the Party at the Pier Concert Series, the free community concert series on Thursday nights that we managed this past summer on behalf of the city. A quick review. This year, Party at the Pier was nine concerts in total, up from eight concerts last year and in previous years. We worked with Steve Ernst of Advantage Entertainment, who was the city's partner in the past to ensure continuity. And we also know that Steve has a high level of pride in producing this alongside us. We presented a diverse lineup of cover acts, from blues to Bruno Mars, Journey to Taylor Swift, local favorite Rumors of Fleetwood Mac Cover Band to Jimmy Buffett. We received rave reviews about the variety of this lineup. We heard that as we surveyed with an online survey and as we went out into the crowd and solicited feedback. High level, this type of lineup brought something that everyone, every age, every demographic, could find something to be excited about. This is a treasured Sandusky tradition, and they hope it see, or they hope to see it continue. One thing I'd like to note is just that you can see this is a combined lineup between Party at the Pier and the Lang Trust. This came up from several years of hearing about the confusion between what happened when. And so, we created a combined lineup, which produced 11 shows throughout this summer, 11 concerts throughout this summer. And this was very much appreciated from the downtown businesses and members of the public that were just trying to have clarity. We have a great data collecting software that allows us to see real-time data with a lot of applications, including how many people are attending the concerts and where they came from. This allows us to look at if our programming is in fact effective, if we're creating more foot traffic in the downtown streetscape, and if the investments in public spaces are paying off. With that, I'm excited to share with you the data from 2024. Concerts attracted over 17,000 attendees. Shows ranged from 875 attendees to 2,734, with an average of over 1,500 attendees per show. When we look at who's attending these shows, we see that a majority of attendees are Sandusky-area residents. On average, from the concert series, 54% of attendees live in 44870. 25% came from within 25 miles but outside that 44870, and 21% came from outside 25 miles. In our opinion, these are nearly perfect or ideal demographics splits, as it's providing a great experience to our local residents. But we are also attracting in outside investment and creating a more economically viable downtown. And with that, the economic impact of these concerts alone brought in $555,000 into the local economy. We're still collecting data from previous years, but we can tell you that this is a significant increase, at least in the attendance, over previous years. This data shows that it is indeed a beloved concert series by residents and regionally. It creates a positive impact in our local economy, and it highlights our city as a cultural and vibrant place. So with that, we could not do this alone. So I did just want to give a couple of thank yous and to highlight this partnership. The City of Sandusky rec staff, they participate on our selection committee for bands, but they also brought invaluable advice on food trucks and site management. The Sandusky City Police. As we drew record attendance this year, it became really clear that we would like to have more of their presence. And so, Chief Oliver and his guys very willingly showed up and wore that vigilant eye that made people feel much more comfortable. So a huge thanks to you, Chief, and your staff. And thank you to you all for providing the operating costs to make this happen. We leveraged those dollars and brought in additional sponsorship dollars, which will create additional programming throughout our downtown, which was the goal of this all along. Peyton from the GSP staff, she will be taking a more hands-on role on this in future years, but she was very helpful at producing a high-leveled and elevated series. And then, just finally, thanks to the community for showing up, giving feedback, as this was one of their favorite traditions of a Sandusky summer, and being a respectful and joyous audience. We heard pretty often from performers, whether them asking if they could come back or the feedback that this is one of their favorite places to perform due to the scenery and also because we're a great community to play for. So this concludes my presentation. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak today. I tried to be brief, and I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I'd like to see something. I know a long time ago I talked to Eric about it. East and west with the, not a trolley, but the STS buses possibly to park down at the Shelby Street program. This is one day a week, right, that we have this? And let, drop the residents off or whoever that comes, drop them off at the site, you know, run them down, get off. And at the end of the concert, run them back down, maybe even Battery Park area. You know, if we could lose a couple hundred cars a night, that opens up for locals that live down here. I think the restaurants and bars, that would help them out also.
We're going to be continuing to make changes, like we have every year in the past and will be moving forward. But bike parking is something that has been brought up as something that we need. So this, along with your trolley idea, like, so thank you for the feedback. We're continuing to monitor that and make adjustments as needed.
It's a great suggestion. Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
There's a lot more value to this. And welcome back, Mackenzie.
Thank you.
It's nice to have you back in the chambers. There's a lot more value to this than the direct economic impact that you've measured. Obviously, it's entertainment. It's making people feel a sense of place and home. All those are terribly important. And having all those visitors come, take a look at our community, because we know from the past and just anecdotally that that causes people to look at Sandusky as a vacation destination and potentially as a residence. But I want to just understand two things, just dollar and cents-wise. Not that these are totally controlling, but I just want to make sure I understand these. What is the total cost to put on this series? And then, how do you measure the economic impact? I'm just curious about those two.
Yeah, great question. So our contract with Steve was for $99,000. And the economic impact was produced by basically looking at what's called the daily spend and then a portion of that, because this is only several hours, and then the multiplier of how many people attended.
Okay, thank you. Good return on investment.
Very, yeah.
Additional comments, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, just to follow up to Mr. Murray's question. Ms. Spriggs, how is the data actually collected? Does somebody do some counts down there, or how does that work?
So again, we use a software specific. It uses cellphone data. And then, there's a lot of applications for it, this being just one, which we love to talk about with the staff on other economic impact things. But we also, it basically is something that we have purchased because it helps our members and businesses, but it also has a lot of other uses that we can use for our clients, such as you.
Ms. Spriggs, I think this program has certainly hit the sweet spot. I've attended more than half of the events this last summer. And you really do deliver to a variety of generations. I can tell you that I engage with people while I'm there. Some people I know, some I don't know. But I can tell you, no one's asked for their money back yet. And really, despite, in spite of whatever the programming is, I see such a difference in generation from young people to middle-aged people to my generation. And that is, that's what that program is about, and that's what the city can be about.
Anecdotally, I was at the Sandusky City Schools, their Leadership Academy, last week. And I asked the question, how many of them attended a Party at the Pier concert? And about half raised their hands. So it is like planting that seed with.
They're getting there, too.
That we care about them, and this city is producing things for them. So they had a lot of ideas to share. But it was cool to see that they go to the concerts as well.
Very good. There are no additional comments. We'll let you get out of here.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Next presentation is by a longtime city resident and friend of mine, and I think friend of many of ours, is Dave Beakley, going to speak tonight regarding one of Sandusky's favorite sons, Mr. Beckling. That's a good spot right there.
I don't have any pictures. Thank you all for inviting me, and especially to Dick Brady, who we've had considerable conversations about this.
This day's been a long time coming.
Let me just explain a little bit the background, and then maybe you'll understand a little more why I'm coming from. In the second half of the 19th century, Chicago was the second-largest city in America. One of the ways railroads made money was from passengers. The railroad had a lot of passengers from Chicago and South Bend, Indiana, to Michigan City, Indiana, in the summertime. Michigan City, Indiana, had nice bathing beaches and dancing pavilions. Cleveland was the fifth-largest city in America at the time. Detroit was fourth. My great uncle was working for a subsidiary of the railroad. His name was G.A. Beckling, and he grew up in Michigan City, Indiana. His assignment was to find a place similar to Michigan City between Detroit and Cleveland. It was like they pointed him to Sandusky. Cedar Point was in a corporation owned by local Sanduskyans. Beckling told them he would give them preferred stock for their common stock. Enough of the stockholders agreed that he acquired 51% of the common stock. While still on the payroll for the railroad, Beckling sent them a telegram that read, "Found sight. It is mine." After that, it was all uphill for Cedar Point and Sandusky. There are no streets named after him here. Would the City Commission consider naming the curve that currently has no name after it? It runs around the cemetery near Mills Creek Golf Course. And that's my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Beakley. Mr. Beakley first approached me with this idea probably six, seven months ago now. And his idea was to name the street Beckling's Curve, because of the curveball that Mr. Beckling threw to his former employer. And I thought it was, I thought it sounded better to call it Beckling's Bend. It just rolled off your tongue a little easier.
That's fine.
We have done some research with engineering, with fire, and with police, and none of them have any objection to that recommendation. It does make it much easier to do this because there are no residents that are located in that 700, 800-foot stretch. And I think we have that, do we have that stretch available up on screen for Commission to see exactly the area we're looking at? As most of you know, it's that area that rolls around Mills Creek Golf Course. That's the area where, when Waddington hits a big slice, it ends up going across that road right there. But.
I hope the ball.
So I thought it was appropriate for Mr. Beakley to make this presentation to you all. And I would entertain, if this is amenable to all of you, I would entertain a motion, a motion may be appropriate to accomplish this.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I make a motion to approve this.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. I think we just had the discussion. Ms. Myers, do you call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That motion is passed. And I would ask Engineering if they would produce perhaps a couple of signs indicating Beckling's Bend. When we get those made, perhaps we can have our Commission clerk can orchestrate a brief ceremony to place those signs at that location. And Mr. Beakley, if you can attend, and your wife can attend, and any other relatives you can gather.
One of my third cousins is Sue Link. And I haven't talked to her about it yet, but obviously, you all know, her husband was the longtime city manager here.
Yes, very appropriate.
Yeah.
Good, we'll get that coordinated.
Okay, thank you.
And it won't take us six or seven months to get it done.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, and thanks for being here. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name and your address and your agenda comments. Seeing no one rushed to the podium, I think we can move to the next item on the agenda. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept those communications?
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved. Here, no objection. That motion is approved. Commissioners, we have six items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of those items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, will you present the consent agenda?
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, approval of fiscal year 2025 tax budget. Item B, approval of U.S. Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Submission. Approval of ODOT Maintenance of State Route 2 is number C. Item D, approval of Change Order 1 for Washington Park gazebo restoration with Garland. Item E, approval of 2025 Serving Our Seniors Contract for Transportation Services. Item F, approval of 2025 Serving Our Seniors Vehicle Lease for Sandusky Transit Services.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and resolutions, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
Move for the adoption of these resolutions and ordinances pursuant to Section 14 of the City's Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. I do want to make one comment regarding a couple items on the consent agenda, and that's the two items that involve serving our seniors. They have been a wonderful anchor for us in our transit service. Not only do they provide about $160,000 of revenue, but they provide significant vehicles for our use at a lease at no cost to the city. So they have been a wonderful partner to us in the transit business. Thank you to them. Ms. Myers, will you call the roll on that motion, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Now, on the ordinances and resolution.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolution are passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number one, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Buckeye Excavating and Construction Incorporated of Norwalk, Ohio, for the East Perkins Ave Waterline Replacement Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bajal.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number two, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing a cooperative agreement between the City of Sandusky and the Ohio Water Development Authority to finance the cost of construction for the storm sewer sanitary and water portion for the East Perkins Ave Waterline Replacement Project, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Crable?
I move for approval of item number two of ordinance under Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the roll on the motion, please.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number three, please.
It is requested a resolution be passed declaring the necessity for the city to proceed with the proposed Churchwell Park Phase 1 Improvements Project, approving the specifications and engineer's estimate of cost thereof, and directing the city manager to advertise for and receive bids in relation thereto, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
I remember you were there, and I think Mr. Waddington was there as well. There may have been others at the table who were present in the park back in 2015 when we were making the rounds on the bicentennial project and trying to figure out what we should do in terms of a five-year project. There were a lot of crazy things in that bicentennial plan that we have accomplished. This is one of the big ones that's left. And a lot of it just seemed pie in the sky. But we know that without planning, that's never going to occur. We began that plan all those years ago. Now, we finally are at the place where we have the plans, the detailed plans, and the financing in place, and we can proceed. So really appreciate what Engineering has done. I mean, you, in particular, Mr. Klein, and Planning has done to be able to move this project forward. This is going to be an enormous change to that park. It's long overdue. There's still more work to do, and that's also in the plan. But this is a huge step forward. Thank you.
Really does, it really does forbear that the longest journey starts with the first step. And engineering is really the first step. If you don't, if you don't put good infrastructure in the ground, you can do nothing else. And they've got, they've got really old and really bad infrastructure in the ground out there. So our thanks just to Engineering for pulling that off.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Bajal.
I would just echo your comments and Mr. Murray's comments. But what caught my eye was the urban forestry grant program. You know, for Mills, I mean, for that park area out there, I was just surprised I had never heard of this before. How does something like that apply?
Yeah. So as part of the projects, every year, we get an offer to apply for urban forestry grant. We've done it in the past. That's, we planted a couple hundred trees a few years ago. And as part of this project, we were, we always go after smaller grants. This is a million-dollar project. But also with the MacArthur Park project, we knew that we wanted to beautify the location as well. That's what the plan came up with, the South Side Plan. So these trees aren't, there's not going to be $125,000 worth of trees within the park proper. There's going to be some along the perimeter, along South Forest. There's some on Camp Street, you know, on all the different forest drives. So our hope is to finish the project for the first phase of the utilities, get this project in, get those trees planted, and then move forward with the second phase of the utility. So it's really that entire neighborhood that's getting them. So it's a piece that's going into it, but it supplements and opens up $125,000 that we can now use for the infrastructure portion.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I just wanted to mention, I think that's pretty creative. So I appreciate the fact that you're willing to look at other avenues for funding. And sometimes, that's the only way you can get projects like this done, if you layer the funding through different sources. So just wanted to mention.
Good job. Ms. Myers, do you call the roll on the motion, please?
that's the only way you can get projects like this done, if you layer the funding through different, different sources. So, just wanted to mention.
Good job. Ms. Mars, you call a roll, a roll on the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Mars, you present item number four, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with Smith Paving and Excavating Incorporated of Norwalk, Ohio, for the 2024 sidewalk repair, replacement, and grinding project, Contract B, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Waddington.
I move for the adaption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, we were fortunate to get excellent bids on this, and I wonder if you would share with my fellow commissioners and with the audience what we've been able to do with the balance of that money. I think it was very appropriate.
Yes, absolutely. When we were first asked to look into completing the sidewalk program, we estimated somewhere in the 900 to million-dollar range to finish everything that we had on the list. When we went through, measured everything, and figured out exactly what we were, what we needed, some of the locations didn't need replacement. Our engineer's estimate came in at 880,000. Well, the bids were about $150,000 less. So, being that this was all ARPA funds, we are looking to award seven hun, just over $730,000, finish that sidewalk list, and that extra money that we had allocated for it, that's also going to be pushed over to the Churchwell and South Side neighborhood to do those utilities.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman.
Additional comments? Mr. Murray.
I'll remind the public, again, as I had before, we opened, so this was a long process to get to where we were. We used to have a sidewalk commissioner, and sidewalk commissioner would go out and say, "You, Dennis Murray, need to replace your sidewalk because that's used by the public. You've got an obligation to maintain it." That's what every other city does. We just lost our way for a long, long time. Decades, we lost our way. Didn't have sidewalk commissioner, weren't telling people they had to fix their sidewalks. Mobility was down, hazards were up. People weren't able to use the sidewalks effectively. So, when we passed issue eight, one of the critical issues that we heard from the public about is get our sidewalks back up to snuff, along with trees and parks and a lot of other things. We haven't now run this process long enough that it's been the collective judgment of the commission which decided to close that process off, and we will, we will return to the status quo that every other city has, which is that if you, you need to take care of your sidewalks, if your sidewalks aren't up to snuff, and they're a danger to the public, then they're going to be removed. You can either do it at your own cost, or the city will do it, and then that goes on your taxes, and you pay that over a period of time. So, it was appropriate that we get caught up because the city had been derelict in its, in fulfilling its responsibility to the public and walkers everywhere, but now it's appropriate to close this. So, I just want to remind the, the public that this goes back to you now, and we're all individually responsible for the sidewalks in front of our homes.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Mars, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
And now on the resolution.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Mars, you present item number six, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring one LifePak-15 heart monitor as unnecessary and unfit for city use pursuant to Section 25 of the city charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase one LifePak-15 heart monitor from Stryker Sales LLC of Chicago, Illinois, for the fire department, and declaring that this ordinance should take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bajali.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Chief, I purchased an item similar to this for my, for my high school 20 years ago, and it was considerably cheaper than what we're buying it at today. Am I that old, or has prices just gone up?
Well, prices have gone up quite a bit. We've seen that in everything. And they're going to go up again here in October, too. So, we're trying to get this purchase in before they go up about another $10,000.
I'm sure the sophistication is different also.
Yeah, this is basically a computer that analyzes heart rhythms. It's quite a bit more advanced than the AED, which is probably what you bought for, what did you say was your school, your high school that you bought? So, we use it every day multiple times. We can send information that we gain from that straight to the hospital, so they know what they're getting before we even get there. It's a critical piece of our equipment.
I think mine took four AA batteries.
Yeah.
Cost to replace those every few days.
Right.
No, I, I know medical equipment is expensive, and we want, we want the very best. It's different between life and death oftentimes. Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Mars, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Mars, you present the last item, item number seven.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase four vehicles from Valley Ford of Huron, Ohio, through the Ohio Department of Administrative Services Cooperative Purchasing Program for various city departments and divisions, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Coons.
Move for approval of this ordinance under item seven pursuant to Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Orzak, it seems like we've done this before.
Yeah, these are vehicles that the commission had already approved, purchasing earlier. They canceled the order. These vehicles are currently at Valley Ford over in Huron and are on the lot and ready to be purchased. So, with your approval tonight, we should be able to get those vehicles in our hands rather quickly.
Any outfitting that goes with these vehicles, or do we bring them over here and put them to work?
All of the vehicles will be brought over. If they need radios or something, the fleet maintenance will do it. But most of the departments that are getting these will require little, little effort.
It's not like a police car, though. We're not adding bells and whistles. Great.
That's correct, yeah.
Additional comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Mars, you call a roll on that motion, please.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. That concludes our regular agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, Commissioner, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I have several donations for you to approve tonight. I have a $500 donation for the K-9 program, and that's from the Sandusky Rotary Club. If I get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection, motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks.
The second one is a donation of $500 for Parks and Rec. Out of School Program was received from Nextel, or Next Level Fit Academy, and the Dray 5K. If I get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks.
Parks and Rec also would like to thank Toughman Equipment and Supply for their, their donation of a use of a mini excavator. The value of the rental would have been $1,435. Get a motion to accept that in kind donation.
So moved.
Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion will be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved with our thanks to Toughman.
And lastly, we have a donation from the commission president for the Justice Center, two city seals, one for the main courtroom and one for the magistrate courtroom. The donation is valued at $3,522.75. If I can get a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion be approved. Hearing no objection, that motion is approved. I would ask the record to show that I have recused myself from approving that.
From the fire department, in February of this year, the fire department applied for training and equipment grant through the Ohio Division of Emergency Medical Services. This grant is applied for annually, and awards vary depending on available funding. This past month, Sandusky Fire was awarded $3,00, excuse me, $264.88. These grant monies are typically used to update EMS equipment and help defray the cost of supplies used while providing emergency medical service to the citizens. The public works for the sewer, sewer plant. The variable frequency drive on the centrifuge at the wastewater plant overheated, rendering the equipment inoperable. Staff has been working with the manufacturer to troubleshoot, but the only option is to upgrade the VFD, variable frequency drive, and associated controls. Staff is requesting emergency motion to approve an expenditure of $65,204 of sewer funds so that the centrifuge can be scheduled for repair and put back in operation, and then we will bring back legislation at the next meeting if I get a motion to do that emergency purchase.
So moved.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Mars, you pull the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Coons.
Yes.
Mr. Crable.
Yes.
Ms. Vargo.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington.
Yes.
Mr. Brady.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bajali.
Yes.
That motion is approved.
The new controls for the generators at Big Island Water Works have been installed and are in operation. This project improves the reliability for potable water treatment during power outages. Staff and the crew commissioned by the U.S. EPA through the Get the Leadout Initiative have visited 6,951 properties in Sandusky during their field visits. They have been given access to 1,272, declined access to 998, and the remaining were inaccessible. Of the 1,272, only 44 had lead lines and 143 had galvanized. The other 1,085 were copper, cast iron, or plastic. The final door knocking is being coordinated in November. ODOT's urban paving project that included reservicing on Fremont and Venice roads, as well as concrete repairs and diamond grinding on Sycamore Line and Mylan Road, are complete. And residents are reminded that the yard waste drop-off days are scheduled for Saturday, October 19th, from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., and Sunday, October 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. That's at Barnes, right? At Barnes Nursery. That concludes my report. I'll take any questions.
Comments or questions for the city manager?
Chairman. It's so disappointing that we had so many, we had so many turndowns to take a look at the lead pipe, lead pipes or potential for lead pipes. If that trend were the same, we would have found another 40 or so lead pipes, and we would have eliminated those or had the potential to eliminate those. I don't know if there's anything more we can do. I don't know if the people are wary of someone that comes to their door. I suppose they probably are, but I'm sure they're in uniform, they've got identification. And I don't know if you have any further insights into how we can improve that in the future. And then, just curious as to how many people self-reported after inspecting. I know we did request that.
Do you know, Aaron, how many people self-reported? I know that the, the folks that came in to help us out from the EPA were very visible, marked extremely well, as was our staff. There was reluctance from folks to let people in their house for various reasons. They attempted, but disappointing, but that's where we're at.
Mr. Orzak, I'm not sure this is a question for you. It might be for, for Mr. Klein. You mentioned in your report that the surface grinding on Cleveland, on Sycamore Line and Mylan Road, what happens? I've had several people ask me, what happens next?
Unfortunately, it doesn't look like we want it to look, but that's done, basically.
So, nothing happens?
Right.
Wow, you're right, it doesn't look like it.
Yeah, basically what they do is they have a piece of diamond grinding equipment that, that takes, it's completely level, and it just comes in and grinds the areas that are a little high or a little bit low. So, it rides a lot better. Unfortunately, it's grinding concrete, so it looks, you can see the tracks and see those things where the blades went through it, so.
It just looks like it's prepped for another surface to go on, doesn't it?
It does.
Yeah. Whoever came up with that idea?
I don't know.
ODOT, ODOT, or that's who's doing it, isn't it, ODOT?
To do the diamond grinding, that was a city and ODOT joint thing. It was either that or replace all the concrete to make it level again. Or, one of the nice things is, is with the diamond grinding, it sets us up in the future because now it's level. We can come back if we want, and when that road starts deteriorating, we can come back and do the asphalt over top of it at that time. But at this point, we'd rather take that money and put it towards other streets that need it more.
Okay. Mr. Crable.
If I could go back to lead lines.
Sure.
I'm just concerned, and I've expressed myself prior to the meeting, but I'm concerned that there's literally thousands of residences that either have turned, you know, there's about 1,000 that turned us down, but there's thousands more that are inaccessible. And I think it's November 15th is the drop dead date as far as the EPA is concerned. We don't want to be crosswise with the EPA. I think I heard that we were going to kind of start this process over again, or continue the process, or something in November. I'm just concerned that we're cutting it really, really close, and that we're going to get into a position where we literally have a lot more project than we have people or time to get it done. So, I'm just expressing myself to you. Literally, it's thousands of residences and/or structures, or what have you, or so the numbers suggest, so.
Thank you, Mr. Crable. Additional comments for the city manager? Now we'll move to items of old business. Any items of old business, Commissioners?
Mr. President, I have one. We increased water rates at a earlier meeting, or a meeting earlier this year. Can anyone give us a sense of where we are now with our water fund? Are we starting to build up reserves again? What does that number look like? Are we where we anticipated being?
Mr. Street Director, I know that information is available on our financials that I see every month. Does everyone see those financials?
All the financial reports that go out monthly, they are on our website, and I do send them to the Commissioners also. The water fund, we have not hit a negative balance, so that's a positive. We're still monitoring it. There's revenue we're waiting to collect, so we are watching that, that fund as closely as we can. You know, we've stopped all expenditures unless it's a must-have in the water fund, and that's where we're at at the moment. The water rates are set to increase again in the first of the year.
Okay. Are we, where we anticipated being at the time that we passed the rate increase?
We are actually maybe a little bit better off because we thought we were going to go into a negative balance. So, when I looked the other day, we had $242,000 in the water fund. That's not a lot of money. That doesn't go far. So, we're still at need to improve and increase revenue, and we're still tracking and watching every expenditure that comes out of the water fund.
Okay, thank you.
Additional items of old business. Items of new business. Any items of new business, Commissioners?
Mr. President.
Mr. Coons.
Just a couple of things. One is primarily a comment related to a presentation that Marcus Harris gave on this civic index. He gave this at the Community Relations Commission, and I actually thought it was an excellent presentation, but also, more importantly, an excellent idea. I know we've had the Community Relations Commission for some time. You all can tell me exactly how long it is, but I appreciated his presentation because I'm the type that believes that, you know, the citizens should be engaged, right? You'll have some who are more engaged than others, of course, but it gives the citizens an opportunity to be heard, but also work more collaboratively in the process. At the same time, just gauging what that level of participation is. So, I was excited about that, so I wanted to commend him and anybody else who was involved in that conversation to bring that tool forward. So, that was the one thing I wanted to make sure I got on the table. The other was related to something we got wind of recently, and this would be directed to our chief of police, and it was related to the bike group, that bike group that meets, I believe it's every Thursday. And it's good to see all those bikers out there, how many they have. And now they also have quite a few children that are joining that, the biking event. And so, And, you know, following the laws of safety to make sure that everybody's safe. And I know that Chief, you chimed in somewhat, but I didn't know what the procedure would be in terms of follow-up, ensuring that one of the citizens that actually reached out has some pretty good ideas about maybe possibly somebody who's on bike patrol with the officers could, before they take off, actually have a conversation, like some dialogue with them, hear the laws, here's what you should do, and then even beyond that, actually take a ride with them. I think that says a lot. But I just wanted to be able to hear from you in terms of what you thought about, what was brought to your attention.
Well, it was brought to my attention via email yesterday or first thing this morning. But I spoke with one of the co-planners. I mean, there's not really somebody in charge of that group, but there was, there's a couple of people that started that bicycle group. I spoke with one of them this afternoon. There's one more ride yet this year. I let that individual know that there are laws that you have to follow. I mean, I understand it's a good time. I don't think going over the overpass was a good decision at all. I think she understood that as well. Next year, they probably won't start up again until sometime April, late April, maybe early spring, so we're going to sit down in the offseason and sort of plan that out, what it's going to look like. Thursdays are a very busy evening for us. It's also the party at the pier and some other things, but we're going to make ourselves available and we'll talk through it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Excellent. Additional items of new business, commissioners?
Mr. President?
Mr. Crable?
If I may, I wasn't sure whether this was new business or old business. We'll just let it be what it is. This has to do with the REC Center, and I sometimes have been accused of having a very simple mind about these kinds of matters, and I accept that as a compliment. I still am concerned about the crayon site, and I'm not sure, I know we have an RFP out, which I'm sure we'll probably see action on or request for action on in a future meeting. But what I don't understand is if there's another site that could be considered, and I'll just say at Mills School, why we would not be asking the architect that is going to be hired here to be working up a side-by-side comparison of the two sites as opposed to working on just one and, what, leaving the second consideration to later? And maybe that's intentional, I don't know. But it seems to me that if there is an interest, and I can say, I would say forthrightly that I have an interest in knowing about the Mills site and what can be done there, and can we do as much or more or less, and what's the cost going to be? What would the final product look like? And we don't, I know we're waiting on a statement from staff with regard to programming, but that would affect both sites. It seems to me that that RFP should be expanded so as to take a look at both of the alternatives. Having said that, I would be interested to know what my fellow commissioners think of it.
Mr. Crable, I think it might be appropriate for Mr. Orzak to speak specifically to that. He and I have had a conversation regarding that. I'm not sure that you're aware that we spent several thousands of dollars
Yep.
with the Branstadter Carroll Group, and they provided exactly what you are asking for. They provided a side-by-side comparison, not just with Mills School, but with Jackson Junior High School and with J.C. Park. And those four sites were scored based on 13 different criteria. So what you're asking for would be a complete duplication of what we've already done. Mr. Orzak, I think I'm jumping ahead of you. I was asking you to provide that information, but pick up where I left off, if you would.
So I would just say that the REC Center was in the planning stages, and we hired Branstadter in early 2023, and they did an analysis. I think we spent several hundred thousand dollars for the report, or, you know, for their analysis, and they collected stakeholder information, they collected community surveys of, I think, 3,000 community members, which were all separate surveys. They even flushed out ones that could have been duplicates by IP address and things like that. The commission at the time, back in, I believe, August of last year, voted to move forward with the, after Branstadter did a presentation, to go to the American Crayon site. And then we produced a flyer, and we went to the community and went through a process to get out the information of what the REC Center could look like for programming, where the location was, and what the costs were going to be. And so that's what was presented to the community. We got a positive vote, although by a small majority. And so that's where the REC Center was, and we've kind of went in a bunch of different directions since that time. And we'll do whatever the commission wants to do, but I think it's a waste of money and time to do another duplication of a report that Branstadter has already done at Mills. It's going to cost a lot of money to do, get a report, and it's going to cost a lot of money to remodel that. We actually had a meeting this morning with staff to determine whether or not that Mills is even a viable site because we don't own the property. There would have to be agreements in place, and there's a whole bunch of legal stuff that I don't want to get into right now, but we are evaluating that before we come back to the commission and make any decisions or recommendations. The, so that's kind of where we're at. It's, we have a criteria architect that's prepared to do a design-build that we're, so we're, the next commission meeting, we're planning on doing a program presentation to the commission to say, these programs for, we're recommending that we're going to do for adults, for seniors, for youth, and what can, what that could look like at the REC Center. And then, after that, then if we decided, if the commission decides to go forward, we have to engage a criteria architect to do about 20, 25% design, and then hire a contractor that's going to have to do the rest of the design, which is going to cost a lot of money to complete that. So until we get to that phase, we don't know how much the new REC Center is going to be. I'm just, you know, we'll do whatever the commission majority wants to do, but I think at this point, we're, have been going through a lot of different processes that if we, if you want a side-by-side comparison, it's going to cost money, and we'll bring back a consultant, and we'll do that. But until we ask and answer the question in a lot of legal matters, I'd ask that we wait and see because it might be something that we can't do. And then if it's something we can do, then the commission can make a decision from there on how they want to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Orzak.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Parker.
John, thank you. I appreciate your comments, and I think all of us absolutely understand, you know, not putting the cart before the horse, figuring out what we need to figure out. I think the concern, and I've had conversations with every person on the commission at different times about just the concern about affordability, and that's in the back of our head. And I think as a commission, we want to make sure we provide the community what we've promised to provide them. And so I think that's where the conversation comes about, you know, are we prepared with a backup plan? Are we, are we sure? What if this comes back and it's not? And in this day and age, unfortunately, I think you have to plan oftentimes for what if, especially right now with the cost of things. So I think that's where a lot of this lies, and I'm willing to wait, you know, for that RFP to come back. I just want to make sure we are doing what's right for the community and what they have voted on, and we are able to provide the best programming for the most, you know, possible residents that we have for everyone, and not having to cut back on things and not looking at a certain part of the community and saying, no, we're not going to have that because we can't afford it. So I want to try to figure out what's going to be best, and I think that's where my mind is, and I know we've pushed a little bit on why can't we have both. I'd go back to Branstadter, they're not doing this project anymore, and they were very expensive, and they were like the Taj Mahal. I would say that sometimes when those types of things are done, I know there were people that wanted this brand-new, big facility in certain places, and sometimes you can get people to say what you want them to say and build what you want them to build and put designs in the way you want them to end up. I'm not saying that that happened, but I think sometimes it is better to have, be able to look at two situations. I just want to be prepared for the second situation if it occurs. So thank you, I appreciate your, I appreciate your comments.
Mr. President, if I, if I might respond, you know, one of the things that Branstadter did not have was what is going to be presented to us soon, and that is, what kind of programming are we doing for what each groups? What does that look like? What facility requirements will be necessary for each of those elements? And I would anticipate that it's a pretty complex set of elements, of proposals for What I don't want to see happen is that we get so far down the road in terms of this RFP, and then we find out, well, we're going to have to make major cuts to the programming, or it's going to be much more expensive than what we anticipated. I'm trying to be as responsible as I possibly can, recognizing that money has already been spent on this, okay? But also recognizing that if we don't engage this question now, it will be much more expensive later. And that's why I am personally urging that we proceed, definitely proceed, but that we do so so that we have two options, two considerations. And the perfect place may well be the crayon site. I'm totally open to that, but I just don't think from my perspective that we're being, I'm going to choose my words carefully. I think we have to be very deliberate about how we proceed at this point because now it starts to really get expensive. And I don't want to see the commission, the city, the city residents having to engage a much more expensive circumstance down the road. I also don't want to get to a point, and I'm speaking for myself now, I don't want to get to a point where I'm presented with one option and I have no idea what the other option might look like. And I'm basically being given the choice. Take it or leave it. Make a decision, Jeff. And I don't want to be in that, in that place. I don't think that's a responsible place for me to be. I think we need to have a full consideration, and both sides, both options, have to be based on what it is we are looking at from a programming standpoint. That's the key. That's the, that's the jumping off point, and Branstadter didn't have that. They had a lot of ideas that were being thrown out by the public. That's great, but what is it that we're proposing? What is the hard, black and white, on paper, this is what the package of programming that we want to move forward with? That, that has not been part of this. Without our rest.
Additional items of
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Joe.
Just a couple of comments. I'm wondering if we could all agree if the RFP comes back and it's too expensive or not within our budget, that we will look at Mills School as another option. I like that idea because it does offer us a chance to reuse that building. If we walk away from it, then that building stays vacant. There may be some extenuating circumstances where we can't move forward on the project because of the law or what the rules are. We should run that out probably before we move forward, but I want to make sure we're in budget and we're inclusive to the entire community. Those are my goals.
I agree with you. I think that's exactly what our plan always was, that in the event that we get down the road and our design-build contractors' prices don't fit a budget, don't fit the amount of dollars that we anticipated, there's always the option to look at the Mills site, the J.C. Park site, the Jackson Junior High School site. There were seven different sites that were originally vetted, narrowed down to four. So I would, I don't think anything that we're doing precludes Plan B. And I think that's exactly what we did with the Justice Center. The Justice Center was programmed to end up the American Crayon site. That turned out to be less feasible and much more cost-effective to go at $222,000. And so we pivoted to that. I would expect this commission to be open-minded enough to pivot on this also, if that's the case. And I, and I think that is the case. But I think at this point in time, we have, we are moving towards the RFP request for proposals. We will eventually get to request proposals from design-build contractors, and that will tell us where the dollars, where the dollars really are. So I think that option is never going to be precluded.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Joe.
And I appreciate the fact that we are having this discussion around the table. I think it's healthy for us to talk these things out, so I appreciate that.
Additional items of new business. If not any public comments regarding anything that pertains to city business, please step to the podium and share with us your thoughts. You again.
I'm Mackenzie Spriggs of 616 Superior Street in Sudusky. I know I have spoken, I promise I'll be brief this time. I realized I forgot to mention that our annual meeting is on October 3rd. That is a Thursday a week from today. It's at Sawmill. The doors open at 4:00, the program begins at 5:00, and as of today, I didn't see any of your names on the RSVP list. We would love to have you there. You all are supporters of GSP and our partners. This plan is also for the next five years, and so it might be interesting or even fun to see those priorities for the next five years, and we really would just love to have you there. If you have any trouble and you want to attend, like you can email me or call me. This goes for city staff as well and the public, but we would just like to invite you formally to that.
I sent my response to our communication director. Obviously, he's not communicating.
Thank you.
Additional comments from the public on any item that pertains to city business?
Chris Weedle, 403 Stadams. Sometime ago, I had a conversation with our city manager about the disparity of the condition between residences in the city and businesses in the city. And John told me that they were understudied to try to either unify the code or do something. But it doesn't make sense to devote all these resources to make sure that our residents look well, when some of the biggest eyesores in the city are the businesses, business buildings that are not being addressed. So I would just, you know, I'd like to know where the commission is on addressing that.
I'll let our city manager respond to that at a future date. You don't have to do it tonight, John. Just put together a response to Mr. Weedle, and we'll call it a day.
Yeah.
Additional comments for residents?
Tom Lamarcas, 20648 Street. Two things. One, what amount of money is left in the stimulus funds that has not been committed? Because the deadline is December 31st, and if there's money left not committed that you're not dangling in front of someone or holding under the table, I know of a company in town that applied through GSP, actually through the city, and then went, was diverted to the GSP and was recently turned down, and I'm not quite sure why they were turned down. But if there's no money, tell us. If there is money, let's get it to businesses that employ hundreds of people in this town, in this community. Otherwise, you know, you never know what could happen. Then when it comes to the lead baits or the lead pipes, I've talked to quite a few people about it. I don't know why they always come up to me, I guess, but they do. They're hesitant to let people from the city into their house because they don't want an inspector in their home. They're afraid they're going to find something else. They don't realize they're just there to look at a lead pipe or a water pipe coming into their house. And the notice that went out was typed on the water bills, so they really didn't get a bona fide notice. I mean, one partner in the home might pay the water bill, the utility bills or what have you, and the other one just lives there. But they're saying, well, I But they're saying, well, I never got a notice, and they send, and they come beating on my door, and they want to come in my house. So, if there's only 40 or 50 people that you think might have a lead pipe out there, send them a certified piece of mail. If it's hundreds of people, then spend $60 in postage and send them a letter. But I would bet areas of town, First Street, McEwen Street, there's a lot of lead there. You look around, we all know it's out there. We just have to find another avenue of getting in. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lamarka. Additional public comments? Lieutenant Dean, a motion to adjourn.